You can be sure this clock over here is on time.
I called the City of Riverbank Regular City Council and Local Redevelopment Authority Meeting to order. Today is Tuesday, May 27, 2014. It is 6:00 PM. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may stand.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father Jesus, we just thank you for this great nation that you've given us. We thank you, Heavenly Father Jesus, for our city. We thank you for the leaders that you have placed in office. We thank you, Heavenly Father Jesus, for the staff that helps the citizens of this community. We come tonight, Heavenly Father, and ask that you bless each and everyone in this community. Bless all here tonight. Bless the business that this city has to take up, Heavenly Father, and we just ask that you just have a great part of it. We ask, Heavenly Father Jesus, that when they turn to you for guidance, that you, Heavenly Father, will provide that. We thank you for this day. We thank you for this great United States of America. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Please be seated. Roll call, please.
Council authority member Janine Tucker.
Here.
Council authority member Leanne Jones Cruz is absent. Council authority member Darlene Barbara Martinez.
Here.
Vice Mayor Chair Cal Campbell.
Here.
Mayor Chair Richard D. O'Brien.
Here. Conflict of interest, any council or authority member or staff who has a direct conflict of interest on any scheduled agenda item to be considered is to declare the conflict at this time. Seeing none, we'll proceed to item one, presentations. We're going to start with item 1.2, Presentation on Water Conservation.
Mayor, members of the City Council, Mr. Michael Riddell will be providing a brief overview on water conservation and the impacts of the drought, specifically on the city of Riverbank. There are a lot of questions surrounding the drought and how it's impacting the valley, and the focus of tonight's presentation is a little bit of that at the very high level, but primarily on how it's impacting the city of Riverbank. I'd also like to take this opportunity to point out that Mr. Robin Boral is sitting in for Mr. Tom Hallinan this evening. Robin Boral is an associate at Churchill White, and he's been doing a lot of behind-the-scenes research for the city, very knowledgeable on a number of issues that we are dealing with, so we welcome him to the diocese this evening as well. So this time, Mr. Riddell.
Thank you. Jill, City Manager, Evening Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. I've got a little bit of a short presentation here. We'll go through it kind of quick to kind of outline what's currently happening in the state and what's happening with the drought task force and what we're currently doing in the city of Riverbank for water conservation. So as you know, the 17th, Governor Brown, January 17th, Governor Brown declared, made a drought proclamation, and then again on the 25th, he issued an executive order. On the 17th, he asked us to reduce by 20%. Through the executive order, he's now enacting it. So as you can see here, this map kind of gives you a quick outline. This is basically pulled off of DWR's website. It shows you kind of what the outline is and the problems that the West is facing, along with parts of Texas in that area. So D3 is an extreme drought. D4 is an exceptional drought, and typically we're running D3, D4, depending on what part of the state you're in. As you can see through this map, it shows you where Stanislaus County is at, and it gives you the D3 classification. So as you know, through the drought and what's been going on, typically you've got, the federal government's getting involved now with USDA, and they have a drought designation for the state of California, and as you can see, it pretty much covers the whole state. So this basically is freeing up federal funds for agricultural. This came out of a Department of Water Resources report on groundwater, and it's kind of a telltale for us because as you can see within, you can see the meresto in the center area of the map, and as you can see, it shows you by color the groundwater level changes, and you can see where typically no change, and there are some areas where it's actually risen a little bit, and this is as of April 30th of this year. So I kind of thought I'd throw that in there for the groundwater side. So what does the proclamation mean to us? Basically, we're looking at 38 gallons a day per household. That'd be 20%. So the city of Riverbank residents will work together, conserve, and reduce the current usage, and that's what the 20% remains. So there's a lot of ways you can reduce. Everybody's seen it before. I mean, you've got to turn off while you're brushing your teeth, run a full dishwasher, repair the leaks in the plumbing, several other things that's in there throughout the irrigation and this type of thing. And basically, these are a lot of things that people can pay attention to and do to reduce water. Biggest use of our water, urban-wise, is obviously landscaping. So there's a lot of things that we can pay attention to it now, and this is now officially California's new hose. So if you take a look at the water use within the state of California, this is how it breaks out. 45% agricultural, 45% through Fed project for environmental and fish, and 10% urban. So we account for 10% of the use of the water in the state of California. So if you take a look at that as a big picture, if they want us to do a 20% reduction, we're reducing the water use in the state of California if we were able to comply, and through the whole state, we reduce the water consumption within the state of California by 2%. So the city of Riverbank has a water ordinance, and we're encouraging the citizens to conserve water. It's addressed through the Water Conservation Ordinance, which is 52.33. The goal of the ordinance is to educate, not penalize. The ordinance includes the issuance of advisory notices to the homeowners whenever an issue is identified, and we won't do that by letter. We're actually going to develop a door hanger that if there is a leak or something that we detect, we'll go ahead and fill that information out and let the homeowner know. And within the staff report, there was a copy of that notice. So Mayor, you won't get any letters.
Okay, good.
The notice is to serve as a reminder. You know, the warning notice would be left to the owner on a broken or a misadjusted sprinkler and that kind of thing. The city also has an anonymous tip line for citizens to report water wasters. The city will, we've developed, and actually, our first quarterly newsletter should be going out, I believe, next week. We'll be also distributing the Water Conservation magnets. I'm sure that you've all seen. If not, and if you need some, let me know. I'll get you a stack. So if you'd like to have them to hand out and that type of thing, I'll be more than happy to get you some. Seasonally, our staff are patrolling. They'll go out and basically, as they're doing their daily business or work areas, and they come by and see somebody that's watering when they're not supposed to, or wrong time of day, or overwatering and stuff, they have been instructed to go ahead and contact the residents and let them know what's going on and help them out in any way they can. And the city staff will be available to help citizens set up their sprinkler timers for free. This is something that we spoke about, and I know that there's been several occasions when I've been approached by several people saying, what happens a lot of times with the sprinkler timers is that you get a power failure or something like that, an interruption in home, they go back to a default time, and typically the default time is daily, one run a day, daily. So that would, that in itself will put them not watering on a correct day.
How many minutes should the timer be on?
It really depends on the size of yard and type of grass, but typically, I run my sprinklers three times a week on my front yard. I've got a pretty good-sized front yard, and I run it eight minutes, and I'm using impacts. So basically, if it's running off into the curb, you're overwatering. Some of the soil, you know, Riverbank's a little bit different because there's a little soil type. You've got some areas around here where it's real sandy. You've got some areas where two feet down, you've got hard pan. So it's really kind of, but working together, we can, we can do the 20% without any issues. And be welcomed, I'll be more than happy to answer any questions. Okay?
Is, I know the county has their water board and whatnot, but we're being asked not to water at certain times, and today I was coming from a desto just outside of Riverbank, just past the solar system where they have the sprinkler system going, and I noticed that they haven't gone full blast right in the middle of the day about 1:00. And I'm wondering, you know, do you think the county's going to do something like that? Because that's right next to us, and people see that, and I don't think it encourages them to want to follow.
And what were they, Councilmember Campbell, what were they watering? Was it agriculture?
It was agriculture, yeah. Some crops, you know.
Typically, they'll water when they want, and a lot of times it has to do whether, if they have their own well, obviously, they'll do it whenever they want. But if they're getting water and using pump to do that, then it has to do with when the water's available to them.
This was curious, is all.
The anonymous tip line for citizens to report water wasters, is it on our city website, or will it be?
It's listed on the website. It's also listed in the presentation, and we let people know as they call. But typically, what, it has always, the tip line's been there for quite some time. It just isn't for that. It's also for, it's for ordinance violations. So it basically goes through our code enforcement officer first. So basically, she's dealing with that, and we're handling any overflow she has, if she starts getting several calls and that kind of thing. But, and we'll continue to do that all summer. That's why I'm saying, once we get the door hanger set up and everything like that, that's how we'll notify. We do have the ability, but it's not our goal to penalize anybody. We do have that ability if we so think it's necessary. So, but you'll notice in that, my staff report that noticed there's actually two warnings before it gets into a violation. And obviously, if we go out and somebody's having a problem with their timer, somebody's got a busted sprinkler that they don't know about, and those kind of things, we'll address each thing as it, as it comes up, to try to help them in any way we can.
Well, I thank you for your presentation. It was right on time. Thank you.
We're going to return to item 1.1, which is the presentation declaring June 2014 as Disability Awareness Month. Lynn, will you join me?
I will. Thank you, Mayor. Sorry for my tardiness.
Well, it'll be noted in your evaluation.
Thank you.
This is Lynn Kihada Vaughn.
Yes, sir.
From the Society for Disability and the City of Riverbank proclamation, a proclamation of the City of Riverbank proclaiming June 2014 as Disability Awareness Month. Whereas freedom and opportunity are the promise to all people of the United States, and whereas children and adults with disabilities are participating as full members of their communities in greater and greater numbers, and whereas more and more children with disabilities are successfully integrated into their neighborhood schools, and whereas the essence of life is not embodied by physical or mental perfection, but by the integral part of human spirit, and whereas to strive for one's own personal goals is a right of life which must be protected, and whereas the development of human potential is the commitment we must make to guarantee the brightest possible tomorrow for our future generations, and when special assistance is needed, we must take those steps necessary for the full integration of peoples with disabilities into our society. Whereas the right to education, to meaningful employment, to make personal choices, and to experience love and friendship with dignities are also among those most basic rights. Now therefore, let it be proclaimed by the City Council of the City of Riverbank that June 2014 is Disability Awareness Month within the City of Riverbank, and we urge all our citizens to become aware of the needs and capabilities of persons with disability. Signed this month by the City Council.
Thank you very much.
And Lynn, thank you very much. Would you like to say a couple words?
If I can. Thank you, Mayor O'Brien and the rest of the City Council. The Society for Disabilities has actually been around for 67 years, but we are proud to proclaim our new name, which is Society for Disabilities. We've had several other names over the past, but the abilities is where the emphasis is, because we all have diverse abilities. But as the mayor stated in this proclamation, we all have equal rights, and we all deserve to live life to its fullest. So I thank you from the bottom of my heart. Again, I'm sorry for being tardy, and we will proudly display this in our office. We do provide recreational activities for people with diverse abilities, as well as job, job training, workforce development. We have two thrift stores that provide that workforce development, and the proceeds go right back into the programs. So I am proud to be here. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Lynn. And just for everyone out there without disabilities, in a moment, in a moment of time, you could become most able to the most disabled. We had this one beautiful young woman that was traveling, fully capable, vehicle accident, paralyzed from the neck down, still was able to, using some of our programs, recoup, came back and was the valedictorian at Stanislaus State two years ago. So thank you very much for all you could do. Item 1.3, Strategic Plan Update.
Mayor, members of the City Council, this is an opportunity to provide a public overview of the progress being made in meeting our strategic objectives that were established in March of this year. Just as a reminder for everybody, that our mission statement is that the city of Riverbank is committed to providing exceptional municipal services in a fiscally sound and professionally responsible manner for our community. Our vision statement that was established in March is that the city of Riverbank will be recognized as a premier community where individuals, families, and businesses thrive in a safe and beautiful environment. And this was the newest addition to the strategic plan that was reviewed and updated in March, as I mentioned. The core values were affirmed as professionalism, transparency, teamwork, respectful behavior, fiscal responsibility, integrity, and ethical behavior, and you'll note how the mission, the vision, and the core values are all interrelated. The three-year goals that have been established by the council, and these were initially established last year, are to enhance public safety, improve and maintain infrastructure and facilities, enhance professionalism and customer service, achieve and maintain financial stability and sustainability, and retain and attract business. These are not necessarily in priority order. They're all very important, but we will go through them in this order. To enhance public safety, update on the City Council on graffiti abatement measures. We're scheduling this for June 10th, so we're a little bit behind on that one, but it is on the calendar. The second item is in regards to a program that the council members have taken on, and that is to work on developing programs to engage at-risk youth in alternative activities and to reduce the negative influences on our community. And I understand that Mayor O'Brien and Councilmember Barbara Martinez, that you've been attending meetings and working with nonprofit groups and faith-based groups that are working on this. And those updates on those activities occurred during council comments. The fourth objective under Public Safety Enhancement is to develop and implement a plan for increasing trespass enforcement. This is in progress. The chief of police took a couple of days off, so he'll be back later this week, and he'll be planning to present something to you in June. The item number five is to conduct a staff scenario-based tabletop exercise and emergency preparedness. This is actually more complicated than it sounds and involving the county, county operation Office of Emergency Services. The police chief is working on this in concurrent effort with normataries, men, and workers of my staff. The second goal is to improve and maintain infrastructure and facilities, and this is, this item, the first item is to, a recommendation that was made to me to recommend funding for a new metering system, and this was done. We had a meeting with affected staff, and they made their case to me that this is something that the city should proceed right now, that they are doing a, an evaluation of the different financing options, so we don't have to pay for this cash and be able to do the entire thing at one time. So this will be presented for further consideration in the CIP, which will be brought to you in June. The second item has been completed, and that is the City Council approved the purchase of a thermal pool blanket that is going to be installed, if it hasn't been already, that that has been, that has already been previously approved on schedule. The third item is to present the request for qualifications for an architect to prepare a conceptual design for the community center and renovations to the pool locker rooms, as well as the cost estimates, and the initial part of that has been done and was presented to the City Council by Sue a couple meetings ago. The fourth objective is to recommend inclusion in the 1415 budget, the cost estimates for Sewer Street and Park Master Plan Updates. We haven't included the cost of full-on master plan updates, but we have been focused on water and sewer rate studies, and that is on tonight's agenda later on in, on the schedule. The fifth item is to develop and recommend to the City Council a water-efficient landscape ordinance, and that is also on tonight's agenda for consideration by the City Council. The sixth item is to recommend to the City Council an action plan for Patterson move improvement concepts, and we have been having staff meetings on this, and in fact, I got another invite for an update on this, and so this is on schedule for being presented to the City Council later on this summer. The seventh is to complete and present to the public the draft document of the Nexus Fee Study for system development fees and present that for public comment. The target date for this is September 1st, as has been pointed out to me with no, this has been a project that has been ongoing for approximately 18 months. Again, one of those things that seemed a lot simpler at the onset than it did in the middle of it, and we're trying to get to a product that we can all be proud of, and that has taken a little more time and energy than initially anticipated. But we are on schedule to present that to council on or before September 1st. The eighth item on this is the Complete Street Standards and Low-Impact Development Standards and present those to the City Council for review and direction, and that is also scheduled to be presented to the City Council in September. And an update on the ADA Transition Plan and present that to the City Council. The City Council did approve funding for the ADA Transition Plan and to update that, and so that is in progress, and that is anticipated to be presented late in September. The goal of enhancing professionalism and customer service is the next area of focus, and that, the first item is to develop and distribute and analyze a job satisfaction survey and present those employees to the management team and the employees. This was slightly delayed. We extended the time for responses for the staff, and then unfortunately, the consultants experienced a death in the family, and so I expected to get those results last week, and I'm going to be getting those sometime either the end of this week or next week. So I haven't actually seen those, but when they are, I will be presenting them to the management team and employees, and the council has also asked to see those, so we'll be reviewing those in the coming, in the coming month. The second item is to prepare and recommend to the City Council a performance-based management training for inclusion in the 2014-2015 budget. That was presented in the budget, and I believe that we'll be discussing that more on June 24th. The sense that I got in our budget study session last week, so we'll probably need to postpone this for mid-year, and we consider it at that time when we have a better handle on what our revenues are, so we can focus on those things that are legally required with any excess over our revenues to expenditures and make sure that we remain structurally balanced. The third item is to develop and distribute an RFP for our new website design, and that is on schedule to be distributed at the beginning of July, probably right after the 4th of July holiday. The fourth objective is to develop and implement a social media strategy to publicize city events and services, and this is an item that I have had initial contact with a consultant to just get us going on this, and then this is one of the things that is going to be ongoing to more effectively use Facebook and our website, and I believe that a new website design will be very helpful in that endeavor as well. That being said, we can still make better use of what we have. And the fifth item is something that is a future objective, is to work more focused on best practices for customer service, both internal and external. And while we haven't done something formally, that is a constant theme in how we deal with staff meetings and both departmental and citywide staff meetings. Under the goal of achieving and maintaining financial stability and sustainability, the first item has been completed, and that was a discussion over cheese and wine and whether or not the city should take that on, and it came under this particular category because there are concerns about whether or not this would be a moneymaker or not. And it was determined by the council that it was worth the small risk financially to maintain this, this event that has become known, known as a City of Riverbank event, even though the city didn't actually produce or conduct the event, it has become synonymous with Riverbank. So I believe that as we move forward, that it will be, it will be a success, and looking forward to seeing how that plays out. And Sue Fitzpatrick is taking the lead of that, a director of Parks and Recreation, and she's been working very hard to get that, to get that going, and we do have a consultant on board and moving forward. Recommend to the City Council for an action, a policy that states new development pays for impacts. The good news on that, we found record of an existing policy, so we didn't actually need to take that back to the City Council. The third objective is to, again, recommend the sewer and water rate studies, and that is again on tonight's agenda, as I mentioned earlier. Last week, at a special budget workshop, we presented a structurally balanced budget for 2014-2015 for discussion by the City Council, and all five members of the City Council were there, and we reviewed each department, and it was a structurally balanced budget, and so that was very good news. On behalf of myself, Maricela Garcia, Director of Finance, and the entire staff, to be able to present a structurally balanced budget without significant cuts. It's essentially a status quo budget, but that, that's better than cuts, so we're very happy about that. We're moving in the right direction. And then that will be presented to the City Council for action on June 24th, and we will follow up on any of the items that were discussed at that budget workshop at that, on the 24th of June. The fifth item is to develop and present to the City Council a direction on a community facilities district. This may need to be reconsidered. We'll see how things go during the summer, but this is something that's on the radar screen as we ponder what we need to do to prepare for the next development wave. Under the goal of retain and track business, the first objective has been completed with the Business Development Workshop for the Calendar Atchison Corridor. You've heard me talk about this particular workshop because it was really a unique workshop on how to create interest and excitement in your downtowns and really focus on building relationships and doing things a little bit differently in your areas that need development and more, an infusion of public. One is to not try to fix problems before they actually exist. Two is build your relationships with your property owners and try and focus on a couple of key early, early wins, and through those to get exciting about, get excited about color and use color to create some interest and excitement. And as you can see from City Hall, I took that to heart with the encouragement of the council members, including Vice Mayor Campbell, leading the way, who participated in that, in that workshop. So that was very, very interesting, and we'll see more of that come out as in the coming months. The second item is to develop a Riverbank Industrial Complex Public Education Plan and present that to the LRB. I've actually have a draft of that, so that's in the works. We just need to present that in June. The executive director is actually out of the office today. The third item is to recommend consideration of a mixed-use chapter of the zoning code for the city of Riverbank. That is on track. The Planning Commission has approved that for recommendation to the City Council, so we are moving forward. The fourth item is to hold at least three mayors' breakfast with community businesses, specifically Crossroads. We need to get those on the calendar, and the spring proved to be very busy, and so we are, need to get those on the calendar so we can, again, provide some opportunities for our business community to meet with the mayor, meet with myself, and make sure that they know the city is interested in, in hearing what they have to say. In that effort, though, of reaching out, the aforementioned workshop, we did invite all the downtown and those, the businesses, some downtown businesses and all of the businesses along the Calendar Atchison Corridor to that workshop. The fifth item is to prepare and distribute an RFP for retail leakage study in the downtown and surrounding areas. So we don't have a lot of money for incentives, but what we can do is provide some information, and so we are, we're planning to prepare and distribute an RFP on that late this summer. The sixth item is to update the marketing study for the comparative values of the Riverbank Industrial Complex Parcels. Again, information, and that'll be, that would be one of the summer projects as well. Item number seven, this is something that came up in the strategic planning session, to coordinate with the Planning Commission and the City Council field trips to Livermore, Pleasanton, and Copperopolis to gather Pleasanton and Copperopolis to gather information about successful downtime revitalization. And I, and I would recommend that rather than, than going through the effort of, of coordinating schedules which can be a very challenging thing to do even with doodle, is, is to have information provided for self-initiated trips. So for example, I happen to be in the Bay Area and I just did a little trip down to Livermore myself. They're not, it's not that, it's not like it's complex and to provide people just an I, an ability to do that on their own, they want and, so I wanted to get some feedback from the council on whether that was, they felt that was appropriate.
I think that, I think that's appropriate and I think that people could go and maybe even take photographs and, uh, we could show them on the slides, you know, to the council.
Any objections to focusing on self-initiated trips?
Check me off on all three.
Okay, there you go. Sure. And then recommend the city council for action on the downtown specific plan and that is again, that is the dominant summer project. The next strategic planning session is September 30th, 2014. As you can see, we have a lot to do this summer. Uh, we are making, we're making progress and look forward to providing another update sometime mid, midsummer on how we're doing on, on these various projects. And of course you get an update at every council meeting on these projects as we, we start checking a few things off the list. I'd be happy to address any questions or comments about the strategic plan. Okay, so great, thank you. That concludes the presentation this evening.
Thank you. Item two, public comment, no action can be taken. At this time, members of the public may comment on any item not appearing on the agenda and within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council LRA Board. Individual comments will be limited to a maximum of five minutes per person and each person may speak once during this time. Time cannot be yielded to another person. Under state law, matters presented during the public comment period cannot be discussed or acted upon. For record purposes, state your name and the city of residence, please make your comments directly to the city council LRA Board. Do I have public comments? Go ahead.
Good evening. Uh, I live in the City of Riverbank and I'm disabled and sewer water and garbage comes mid-month and has to be paid by the end of the month and a lot of people that are on SSI and disability can't pay it at the end of the month because we usually get paid the beginning of the month. So, you know, it's due, you know, around the 30th or the 31st or the 29th and stuff like that. And I was wondering if you couldn't change the due date to pay your utility bill to the beginning of the month because a lot of people can't pay it when you guys want the utility bill to be paid and a lot of old people and disabled can't do it. It makes it hard. Because a lot of them are, and like me, I'm on a fixed income. Which makes it hard because I get the late charge and then I get a shut-off notice and stuff like that. I was just wondering if, you know, possibly you could change the scheduling for the, the due date on that utilities.
And at this time, we can't discuss what you're bringing up, but that's valid.
Yeah, I understand that. And the other thing is, is on the utilities, the garbage. I'm not using your, the garbage can no more, you know, period, because I'm, I got a compost and I'm recycling everything and I'm paying a $35 bill to have, you know, the garbage taken away and they're not taking it away. So I was wondering if there's any way that I don't have to use the garbage, which I don't, which they can eliminate the $35 off my bill. Because I know a lot of people are starting to do that, but yet we still have to pay for garbage that we're not using. So I was, you know, that's the other thing I was, you know, consider, you know, for you guys to consider. Thank you.
Any further public comment? Would he like to address any of the statements?
Yes, Mayor of City Council, um, the gentleman who, who came, he actually came to the office this morning. He has spoken with members of the staff as well as Director of Finance and I actually would like Maricela to provide a little bit more information on, on this unless you prefer. I'll, I'll give you the update. So essentially, um, I think that the having the idea of, of being considerate of, of when people get their, their government checks is important. Um, but as I discussed with Maricela, that we actually do send those out at the beginning of the month and the gentleman who spoke, apparently he's getting that from his landlord, so there's a delay between when it's mailed to his landlord who's on, on, on the mailing list and the billing list and then when he gets the bill from his landlord. So there's some extenuating circumstances surrounding this particular gentleman's experience which we certainly sympathize with. Uh, the second item in terms of the, the garbage fee, this is something that comes up frequently and that is we do have an ordinance for mandatory trash collection. And, and what happens is that if, if you start making exceptions for that, it's very easy for people to say that they will take their garbage and they will pass, they will, they will take it to work or they are composting whatever, but when they're not, then they start putting it in their neighbor's bins. And so in order, for public health and safety, many cities have mandatory trash collections ordinance. Now whether or not we, we take some looks at ways to revise that to allow some, for some proof of alternative disposal sites, that might be something to worth considering down the line, but it is, it is public health and safety and while I'm sure this gentleman is telling the truth and that he doesn't use it, just as many people who, who I've talked to over the course of years, um, but for those very few, those that would use it as a way to get, who, who may have great intentions of not producing any trash, but when they did, it, it could ultimately cause, cause problems in neighborhoods and, and pose a health and safety risk.
Okay.
If there's any additional details, the Director of Finance will be happy to address them.
All right, thank you. All right, no more public comment. We'll go proceed to item three, the consent calendar, consistent of item 3A, wave readings. Item 3B, approval of May 13th, 2014, city council and local redevelopment authority minutes. Item 3C, second reading by title only, an adoption of ordinance number 2014-003 of the city council of the City of Riverbank, California, amending Title 15 land usage, Chapter 150 Building Regulations adding Section 5, 150.16, solo, solar, photovoltaic power systems of the City of Riverbank Code of Ordinances. Item 3D, second reading by title only, thank God, an adoption of an ordinance number 2014-004 of the city council of the City of Riverbank, California, amending Title 15 land usage, Chapter 153 zoning, adding new Section 153.004, application and processing fee of the City of Riverbank Code of Ordinances. Do I have anyone who wish to pull any particular item or do, or for comment or for discussion? Do I have anyone from the public wish to pull any particular item for comments or discussion? So now I bring it back to the city council for a recommendation.
Make a recommendation that we approve the consent calendar as read.
A second?
Of a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented and a second.
Council authority member Barbara Martinez?
Yes.
Council authority member Tucker?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Chair Campbell?
Yes.
Mayor Chair O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion passes four, zero.
Item five, consistent of item 5.1, resolution to enforce California vehicle code sections 22350, basic speed law 23103, reckless driving and 23109, speed contest and division 16.5 off-highway vehicles at the crossroads at the Riverbank Shopping Center location.
Mayor of City Council, um, due to the legal nature of this, uh, there's a long, a long title. Um, in essence, Broman Development has asked the city, the Sheriff's Department to enforce traffic laws at the Crossroad Shopping Center. And so that is essentially the purpose of this item is to give, to give the Sheriff's Department the authority to do that. And we have the pleasure of having Deputy Gary Vernon here this evening to present this item and to address any questions you have. As I mentioned earlier, the Chief of Police is taking a couple of well-deserved days off. Deputy Vernon.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Uh, I'm here in Chief Kylie's stead, obviously not to his capacity, but any questions we might have, I hopefully I can answer those for you. Uh, this item was brought forth to the City of Riverbank Police Department, Police Services by many different people, including people that utilize the retail services at crossroads, um, also businesses there requesting that we do something about the speed and driving problems that they have inside the Crossroad Shopping Center. Uh, it's presented tonight just to another tool to help us keep the community safer. Um, I noted in your presentation tonight, it falls right in line with your three-year goals and your vision statement to keep public safety as number one. And basically we've had instances where, I spoke with Broman Development earlier today and on prior occasions where we've had people actually struck pedestrians, we've had several car collisions there. While not being able to enforce the speed, I have made traffic stops in there 60 miles an hour in some of the locations and those are all brought up to Broman and some of the residents and, uh, businesses there brought that up. So in addressing that, we found a solution and Broman Development's been very kind and, and asked for those improvements to be made. You'll find in your attachments, obviously, the locations of some of the new improvements and better signage to fall in line with, uh, regulations for enforcement. If you have any questions, I'm here.
Right. First off for the lawyer, how, how legal is this?
There's authority under the California Vehicle Code, so it looks like it's well within the city's legal authority.
If I could also tell the council, um, the vehicle code also gives a, um, almost exclusion for local law enforcement if this was to be adopted where there's no, um, no level of work that's expected. So there's no extra work. While we could be doing enforcement inside of the parking lot or the structures that they have there, there's no expectation that we have to do that work. So officers could focus their time there and again, try to target public safety in, in areas that are dangerous.
The ordinance, no ordinance or resolution shall be enacted under subdivision A without public hearing. Is this part of the public hearing process and then 10 days following the second hearing? Okay. All right.
How will this affect our police services, our manpower? Will it put, put you under a bit more stress, you know, spread you out more?
Well, it's spread me out more. To be honest, uh, most of our traffic officers, myself included and officers here, we routinely make patrols through that area. Um, as you know, it's a high retail area which is a, a target-rich environment. If you're going to be inside Target, it's not a five-minute trip. If you're going to be inside Kohl's, you're going to be there a little while. If you have children like I do, there's several different departments you have to hit. So while you're in there, your car does provide a target-rich environment for our people that take those opportunities and, and break the laws and violate these people. So we are in there quite often and as you know, in the holiday season, we actually have extra patrols there. So it's part of the things that we already do. It'll just allow us more tools in which to contact people.
Thank you.
I have a question. Are there currently, right now, are there speed limit signs? I don't remember.
Uh, not, I'm not aware of any speed limit signs as of, as of right now. There are stop signs and those have been addressed as far as regulatory signs. For our purposes, they have to be and then there has to be signs posted at every entrance, um, very similar to like the Vintage Fair Mall. If you notice there, police officers from the City of Modesto take action there. It has to be, because it's on private property, it has to be requested by the developer property owner and then it has to be voted by resolution and once that done, then we can move in and, and start making enforcement stops. And we find that any area that we start to focus our attentions on, you'll find a lot safer area as soon as they realize that we can actually do it. But I've been in my patrol car, um, not even on my bike, but in a marked patrol unit going through there and guys not stopping at any of the stop signs, people walking in front of them, they're just going around them. And there's really not too much I can do with the exception of I did arrest a person for reckless driving. So, uh, but I, I don't know what happened with that so far, so I went to the DA's office.
Isn't there, is it a recommended or a law saying 10 miles an hour in parking?
I believe it's 15, uh, but there are restrictions. I've been to several different shopping areas where it's 20, uh, but again, that's going to be up to the developer and what they decide. But we don't want it to be 60.
No.
And we'll have, uh, some kind of signs around the back too, right?
They, they will be posted and I know in speaking with Broman Development, they're also going to put in a couple additional speed bumps. Um, I know that the, the council's probably been through there and has felt those speed bumps. I, I believe they're very well-designed. Um, I can tell you that there, there's some stores in the shopping center that took their brakes when they put those new things in because they weren't painted, painted right away in the backside. Uh, there was cars jumping 15, 20 feet, all four tires off the ground, that's how fast they're using the backside as a pass-through. Uh, we've had several collisions in the backside to include one of our own patrol cars, uh, just the people driving just erratically fast because there is no speed limit, is private property. Uh, with the exclusion of drunk driving, there's not too much we can do without this ordinance be passed.
Okay.
Mayor O'Brien, I'd like to clarify your earlier question. Um, what's proposed here is a resolution, so under the California Vehicle Code, um, the city can adopt an ordinance or resolution. What has been prepared is a resolution, so if adopted, it would be effective immediately and we would not need to hold a second hearing on this.
Interesting. That's not what it says in the resolution. Okay, thank you. Any further comments, questions? This is a public hearing?
Could be a great idea.
Oops. Thank you.
This is a public hearing, there, probably, um, it's not a hearing, is it? The public's welcome for comment? Saying no public comment, I bring this back for the council's, um, action. Before we do that, this is, you're saying that this by resolution can be done today? Does not have to be coming back for a second reading?
That is correct.
That puts a little bit of a damper on notification.
It was noticed though. It was noticed as a public hearing. Is that correct, Annabelle?
That's correct.
Yeah, so it, it has been publicly noticed whether...
Okay.
It was noticed as an ordinance, but they prepared it as a resolution.
It's under recommendation, it says public hearing, notice published May 14th in the local newspaper pursuant to the code, the vehicle.
I, I believe Mr. Hall and I worked with the chief on this, so they must have come up with some sort of, an interesting hybrid here.
Okay, as long as there's, it's been publicly noticed?
Yes.
And that it goes to the citizens of Riverbank. Well, it doesn't really have to.
No, the next step would be for them to, for Broman to put the signs up.
And they will be paying for all the signs and any of the others? And could they take a judicious look at the, um, where the stop signs are? If you have a crosswalk, that's a crosswalk, but if you have to stop at every one with nobody in the crosswalk, um, we're here for safety and conservation of fuels.
If you look at the chart, there are places where they are and where they're proposed to be.
Okay. I couldn't read that, even with my glasses on. Okay. Bring it back to the council for recommendation.
I'll make a recommendation that we approve item 5.1.
A second?
Of a motion, motion to approve item 5.1 and a second.
Council member Barbara Martinez?
Yes.
Council member Tucker?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion passes four, zero.
Item 5.2, under public hearing, first reading and introduction. First reading and introduction by title only of an ordinance of the city council of the City of Riverbank, California, amending Title 15 land usage by adding new Chapter 157, water efficient landscape and irrigation of the City of Riverbank Code of Ordinances.
Yes, Mayor of City Council, um, Ms. Kathleen Klick will be presenting, uh, the overview of this proposed ordinance.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the city council. Tonight, um, we're going to have a first reading of a water efficient landscape and Um, the purpose of this ordinance is to, um, to amend title... The purpose of this ordinance is to amend Title 15 land usage, adding new chapter 157, which would be water-efficient landscape and irrigation. Some background on this ordinance. Water Conservation Bill was passed, AB 1881, was approved by the Governor in 2006, and it mandated the state to develop a model landscape ordinance to help with water conservation. Local agencies were to adopt a water-efficient landscape ordinance no later than January of 2010, so we are a little late. The intent of this ordinance tonight is to comply with the state law, comply with the requirements of the new urban water master plan, which you will be seeing in the next couple of months for review, establish minimum landscape areas for new development projects, encourage the use of low-water drought-tolerant plants, and require water-efficient irrigation systems. And tonight, the recommendation to you, the City Council, is to conduct the first reading and introduction by title only of the ordinance presented, and consider its approval by roll call vote to conduct a second reading by title only at the June 10th, 2014, regular City Council meeting, and consider its adoption. Any questions or comments?
In the proposed master's plan that you have, that you're still developing?
Yes.
Okay, is there a way that we could see even a draft copy of that and as it relates to what you're showing us in ordinance?
Yes.
Not to make extra work, just, I just want to see how that all fits together.
Yes, we can provide that.
Thank you.
Not a problem.
Okay, are there any questions or comments on the first reading and introduction of the water-efficient landscape and irrigation ordinance? Is a public comment, a public hearing, is there any public comment on item 5.2, introduction of the water-efficient landscape and irrigation code? If not, I bring it back here for recommendation to introduce this first reading and introduction by title only, 5.2. It's an introduction, correct?
Yes.
Don't all jump in there at once.
Do we actually have to make...
Yes.
Oh, okay. I so recommend.
So we actually, so moves to have it introduced. Do I have a second?
I second it.
We have a first and a second for introduction by title only of chapter 157 to the Riverbank Code of Ordinances.
To have a second reading at the next meeting?
Right, to have the second reading at the June 10th City Council meeting.
Councilmember Barbara Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember Tucker?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion passes 4-0.
Item 6.1, report on the status of LRA, thank you very much, Kathleen, report on status of LRA budget for third quarter of FY 2013-14.
Yes, and Mayor, members of the City Council, this is a quarterly update. As you know, we come before you four times a year with an update on how the budget's going to provide regular reviews for both the, the LRA Authority Board as well as the public. On this evening, Ms. Melissa Holdaway will be presenting the report for the third quarter budget for 2013-14. And then in just a couple of weeks, you will see the proposed plan for next year's full budget. So this is, this is just the quarterly update. The next meeting, you'll get the, the plan for 14-15.
Good evening, Chair and Authority Members. I'm bringing you the third quarter budget. This is the revenue and expenditures through March 31st. The first slide is going to review the revenue that we've received in the third quarter. It's pretty much in line with what we're expecting to come in this quarter. At the bottom, the ESCA number one, the 208,000 that was received, is reimbursement for the TND portion of the personal property cleanup. That's the transportation and disposal of the personal property that's being removed from the site. We are expecting quite a large lump in this next quarter. You'll see when I present the final budget numbers for the fourth quarter. This slide is administrative expenditures. This is primarily funded by OEA, the Office of Economic Adjustment Grant, and some match.
Can you explain, explain item A?
Item A, okay, that is, we've, we've, excuse me, we have expended $64,000 this quarter on legal fees that we had not anticipated in the budget when we first did the budget back at the beginning of the year. The legal fees are for the Stanislaus Fire District issue that's currently taking place, and then the specific plan review. There was some, there was some additional review that needed done.
But that was just legal?
They were just legal. And these, these legal fees are not covered by the legal, these are only covered by leasehold, unfortunately. OEA will not cover those expenditures.
Would the Army Corps?
They will not cover any expenditures for legal issues with the Stanislaus Consolidated Fire District at this time. So they are picked up by the leasehold revenue. The side expenditures are, as you can see, a little higher this time. The electrical PMs that you questioned the last quarter have finally come through. There was some work that was done on some of them, so you'll see the, the jump in the expenditures on that line item. We do have the 140,000 that was approved at mid-year, as well as approved at the beginning of the year. The contract ended up being only 108,000, and we have not used all of that. They have, in the next quarter, you'll see, they've, were under budget on that. And the personal property cleanup project expenditures, we have received the Westin monthly reports and requests for payments on the fixed cost portion of their contract. The variable cost is what they've spent, what they've spent so far for the TND, transportation and disposal, and SJS is ESCA number one. And that's over budget by 66,000. We're awaiting Army funding approval for the ESCA one, for the OSHA-required safety fencing that was not included in the budget originally. From my understanding is between ESCA number one and ESCA number two, that it was going to be closer together. But with the, the negotiations still taking place on that, and it's slowing down, we did not want to leave open pits since the ESCA number one has been completed. There was huge open pits in all the lines, and we have all of our tenants on site with many employees out there, and we felt it was a safety issue at that time. So we took it upon ourselves to, to get the fencing up. And then the statement of revenue and expenses for third quarter. Total revenue received was 706,978. Total expenditures was 5,726,407. That's the carryover from prior quarter that we received, total revenue of 9 million from the ESCA. And that leaves us net revenue less expenditures, 2,278,108. Any questions?
I'm impressed where, where it's going, but have we done a business analysis on where we will be, or when we will be able to stand alone without any government subsidies? For example, what is our operating expenses versus our operating rents? But when will we be at?
When we're not receiving O and M from the Army as supplemental and...
You could, you could separate that now, sometime in the future, just say, well, this is what we need from our rent to achieve zero dependence.
We are actually...
And able to pay, you know, our fire assessment.
Yeah, we are actually working on a three-year plan to see that, because we are in a step down from the OEA grant right now. They expected us to transfer, and so they've started us on a step, step-down procedure at this time. So in this quarter, or I mean, in this next fiscal year, and the next two years after that, we only have three years left with OEA funds. So we are working on a three-year budget to see how that looks.
Okay, that wasn't my question.
And it's showing the reduction in the revenue and only being sustained by leasehold?
Right.
I think what you're trying to get to...
That's what I wanted, and even if it's earlier.
And where there's a deficit and...
What do we need to at least break even? Okay? And, because everything else goes back into the site. So where is that point in the future? Not asking it today.
We will work on it, Mayor. Any other questions? No?
This is a public hearing, new business, item 6.1. Any comments? Seeing none, coming back to item 6.1. Oh, wait a minute, do we have to accept it?
I do, I would like a motion to accept, so it's formally been accepted and...
Looking for a motion to accept, item 6.1.
I'll make a motion to accept item 6.1.
I second.
I have a motion to accept item 6.1 and a second.
30-member Barbara Martinez?
Yes.
30-member Tucker?
Yes.
Vice Chair Campbell?
Yes.
Chair O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion passes 4-0.
Item 6.2, consideration of, one, contract award to Bartle Wells Associates for preparation of sewer and water rate studies, and two, adoption of a resolution allocating $25,000 each from the water and sewer fund budgets for the preparation of the study.
Mayor, members of the City Council, as you recall, when we met in the budget workshop last week, one of the concerns was that we needed to move faster on the sewer and water rate studies to give the council an opportunity to look at those rate structures and make any adjustments needed to end the deficit spending. And so in response to that direction, we are bringing this to you before the, before the end of the fiscal year, so we can move forward. Because we had already issued the RFP, we did have a recommendation for you. So rather than sit on that for a month, is to go ahead and present that to you this evening for consideration. So this time, I'd like our Director of Finance, Ms. Maricela Garcia, to present the staff report.
Wasn't that the clicker Jill was using?
I believe that our able city clerk decontaminated it for the next person, so thank you, Annabelle.
You're welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council Members. Tonight's discussion is the sewer and water rate study and the proposed awarding of a contract to Bartle Wells Associates. We have two enterprise funds currently that are designed to be self-sufficient. What the revenues we are collecting should do is be sufficient to cover current operating costs, future capital expenditures, and hold an emergency reserve. We currently collect revenues from our rate payers, which include our residential, commercial, industrial, and our internal tenants. In essence, we pay ourselves, so our parks, our city buildings, all also contribute towards our water and sewer funds in order to recoup those costs for the services provided. Our sewer enterprise fund, 91% of the revenues that are received are from our residential and commercial customers. 2% of the revenues are from our industrial permit holders. The last official rate increase that the sewer fund received was in July of 2008. That was a CPI increase, or Consumer Price Index increase, that was authorized through our city ordinance. That increase did sunset in 2008. The last rate studies we performed were in 2010 and 2011. Both studies went through the Prop 218 notification requirements, but unfortunately, were not This is just an overview of what the sewer enterprise fund surplus and deficit has been over the past five fiscal years and the anticipated one for the upcoming fiscal year. As you'll note, there was a huge decrease between 2011, '12, and 2012 and '13. The major factor there was the loss of a business here in our downtown area that held an industrial permit and used up quite significant part of our capacity, and so we were being reimbursed by them. With that business no longer in our city, we lost those revenues. And so that has slowly increased our, our deficit over the past three years, with the upcoming year being projected at $220,000. Our water enterprise fund receives 97% of its revenues from our residential, commercial, and industrial rate payers. Our last rate increase there was in July of 2010, and it was also through an approved Consumer Price Index increase. A historical view of the surplus and deficit within the water enterprise fund will reflect a quite significant deficit that we experienced in 2012-13, some large capital items that were necessary at that point in time to be considered. And so we had to allocate our reserves towards those capital improvements. For the upcoming fiscal year, we are actually projecting a slight surplus of $27,000. Still not quite where we need to be in order to continue growing our emergency reserve within the water fund, but we are at least not suffering any structural deficits. And so our recommendation is to still look at the water rates for our current enterprise fund, just to make sure that those rates are in line with future capital needs. In June 2013, our Budget Advisory Committee, after reviewing all of the budgets, actually presented to you a recommendation which asks that a consideration of each utility rate study be performed for our water and sewer rates to ensure that our revenues were sufficient to cover the current operating expenditures and our future capital needs. In addition, at the March strategic planning meeting, there was an objective set under the three-year goal to achieve and maintain financial stability and sustainability, which actually requested that the Deputy Director of Development Services and I recommend to you for consideration, a consultant to perform the sewer and water rate studies. And so our Deputy Director did issue a request for proposals. Three proposals were received, and tonight, we're asking you to consider awarding a contract to the low bidder, which was Bartle Wells Associates, for the preparation of the sewer and water rate studies. Their proposal was received in the amount of $39,000. We're actually recommending the addition of another $10,000 for some potential town hall meetings. Currently, within their contract, they have set two public hearings with the City Council. We would recommend that as an educational component to our residents, that we would provide additional funding to be able to do that with them. And so tonight, we're requesting an allocation of up to $25,000 each from the water and sewer fund budgets for a total cost of $50,000 for the preparation of the studies. And this is just a proposed timeline. It's very tentative at this point in time, with the discussions that our Deputy Director has been having with our proposed contract at Bartle Wells Associates. And so we would be looking, under this scenario, at a proposed Prop 218 hearing sometime in the first meeting in September.
When would the conclusion or recommendation become effective?
The recommendation, because it is an ordinance change, it would require a second hearing with the rates being in effect 30 days after that second hearing.
There's two things that are different between 2011 than today. In 2011, you had a surplus still, although you had a lot of outstanding issues that were addressed in previous rate increases. And we still had Rizzo Lopez without knowing that they were leaving. And so today, we have a very large deficit in the sewer... And so, today, we have a very large deficit in the sewer rate. And not, since we don't have a surplus any longer, we can't pay back what was transferred to them from other funds that they are required to pay back, correct?
That's correct. There are currently two outstanding internal loans, one being from, actually, both being from our system development fee funds, so we would want to reimburse those as quickly as possible.
All right, questions or comments from Maricela?
I have a question. Did you indicate the $39,000 fee would include two town hall meetings?
It would include two public hearings with the City Council, not, one would be to present the results of the rate studies, and the second one would be at the time of the Proposition 218 public hearing. What we're proposing is the additional funds to be able to hold more specific workshops or town hall meetings for our residents, so that the process can be explained to them, as well as the need for the increase in rates if it is proposed.
Thank you.
Further comments or questions? I'd like to have comments from the public? Seeing none, bring it back for consideration. Do I have a recommendation to award the contract?
I move to approve item 6.2.
I'll second. We have a motion to approve and a second.
Councilmember Barbara Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember Tucker?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion passes 4-0.
Thank you. Item 7, comments, staff comments, please.
Mayor, members of the City Council, I'd like our Director of Parks and Recreation, Sue Fitzpatrick, to provide you an update on some of the summer programs, as well as some of the activities we're experiencing at Jacob Myers Park and the surrounding areas.
Mayor, members of the council, we had a very busy weekend at Jacob Myers Park, especially yesterday. We actually were close to capacity at 10:00 a.m., which is a record. We've never reached capacity that early. They hauled away over 100 bags of trash yesterday and probably had well over 2,000 people in the park. So, it was close to that on Sunday, but yesterday, it was really, real busy. I've noticed a shift, and I'm not real clear what it is. I noticed it on Easter, because we felt capacity on Easter, and we've never even provided services that early in the year. But I don't know if it's other areas are charging more. I was out at Turlock Reservoir over the weekend, and they charged $11 to get in, $20 to launch a boat. So, I think that might be part of what we're seeing. I'm not sure. We're still trying to research what's different, but people are shifting here. Today, we already did nine park reservations just today. So, something's going on, and we're just preparing for it. We're gearing up for a busy summer. We do open up our aquatics season on Monday. Swim team starts, all the pool programs start up. Also, we start our first day camp next week, so...
Could you provide a little update on River Cove?
Oh, I'm sorry.
As well?
River Cove. We did have some complaints again about River Cove, which is the area across from Jacob Myers Park, the beach area, that we found out the city does have some control over. Apparently, there were about 40 cars parked along the River Cove neighborhood area where the river access is, and the complaints were a lot of misbehavior, urinating in public, bad language, dressing in public, just a lot of activity there. We have continued, as we promised, to do garbage patrol and send out ONTEL security services. We have done that, and I know our Sheriff's Department is aware of the situation, but we did have the neighborhood upset yesterday, so...
And so, we're again encouraging everyone, if they see this, to please call the Sheriff's Department. They've been made aware of that. We've had communications with them, just to continue that effort that was begun last year. We do encourage everyone to call when they were having their regular neighborhood meetings. That was communicated, please call, please call, so we can have this for the record. So, it is, we are not, we cannot restrict access to the river. We cannot restrict that for the public, but we can at least enforce, you know, modes of good behavior. But we need to, the Sheriff's Department needs to be aware of it, and they will respond if they're not responding to higher priority calls.
I have a question. You said the city has some control over what? You said the beach?
The beach area. When we researched that, we found out that we are, we do own that area there, which in the past, we didn't know we did.
So, since we own it, can we restrict access to it?
Can't restrict access, but we can enforce our park regulations. So, we have posted signs, and last year, we started, or maybe two summers ago, we started fully enforcing the no alcohol. We actually give citations, and we can enforce our regular park regulations. So, that's what we've done differently there.
Last year, the year before, there were signs posted noting the prohibitions, and we do have ONTEL security that is out there on a regular basis, and we may be increasing that security presence along with the Sheriff's Department on holiday weekends to address this larger-than-normal crowd.
I have a question or two. The people that are parking along River Cove, are they actually going up the bank and crossing the river to go up to Jacob Myers, or are they just hanging out on that side of the bank?
I asked our staff to kind of monitor that, and they said a lot of them are rafting. They're putting in their rafts there, and they like that beach. And it is a nice little beach area. I think it's just something that people have come to know. Along, if you are rafting down the river, there aren't a lot of good stopping places, and I think now, people have found that is a real nice one. So, a lot of them are rafters. The one yesterday, it was, it seemed like a large family, so it's almost like a family decided to have their family get together there.
They parked on River Cove, then launched?
Yeah. They didn't cross, they just stay on that beach area, on that side.
Stay on that beach area there, and we don't control that beach area, basically.
No, she said we do.
We do.
Okay.
We do, that one portion there.
That one portion, then.
Can we put a slight improvement and then have it rented?
Yeah, access going down is kind of difficult, too.
I know the River Cove people were, residents were extremely upset, and involved me quite early on, on Saturday, where 35 cars were, and I heard there were 70 cars on Monday. That's a lot of cars. So, is there any way we, this is just hypothetical, could we restrict parking, public parking, all parking in River Cove during a weekend, since the city owns the streets?
There, you know, we've looked at a variety of options. We could go to a formal permit process. That's something that needs to be vetted through legal. The concerns about restricting parking is making sure we're not just diverting, kind of spreading out the problem. Permit parking is also somewhat of a burden on the residents that live there, so there's not a perfect solution that we've identified. I mean, conceptually, can there be things that could be done? Yes, but that's a fair amount of time and energy.
I wasn't going by permit, I was going by prohibition of parking on the streets, let's say Friday through Mondays. That would be an imposition on the residents, but there has to be, they're going to have to come up with the recommendation, but, you know, they're just throwing it out, this is your problem, this is your problem. The problem is, it's public. There's no problem with it being public. There's no problem with them going over the hill. That's not the problem. If you have trash cans and they use the trash containers, that's not the problem. The biggest issue a lot of them have is the public urination, dressing, and that they're in their neighborhood. So, you can eliminate at least them being in the neighborhood by saying, no one can park there. That, I mean, that's not my recommendation. That's something that's going to have to come from them. So, in my public comments, so I might as well continue on this segue, I'd like to sit down with whoever now thinks that they're in charge of the River Cove and find out what they want as solutions and have them formally present them. Because they're not going to eliminate public access if it's for everyone but everyone And I just, and I would like a lawyer to sit down with us when we're doing that.
I do think that we're going to need to have some legal counsel on our different options, and as the council knows, we have engaged frequently with the River Cove residents. When they were meeting regularly, we had the Chief of Police attended regularly, the Representative from Parks attended regularly. I attended a couple times. Members of the council were there numerous times as well. So, this is something we've worked through, and I think we've responded to a lot of their issues. The dilemma that we have is that civilized society requires people to act civilized, because there's not the ability to have a police presence 24 hours a day, and I know this council knows that, and we all know that, and it's really, it's very frustrating when you have people, and in some ways, just maybe a small percentage causing so many troubles for the people that want to go and enjoy it in the right spirit, and for the neighbors that live there, that they also have certainly understandable that they would be upset.
They should be upset about what was being done wrong, not the parking on the street, but that seems to be the biggest issue first. So, we have to come up with some type of resolution, not resolution, to resolve this. Okay, sorry.
Good to be possible, yes.
Meanwhile, we'll come up with a plan to be ready for 4th of July weekend.
I have one other question also concerning the amount of people. You said there were 2,000. Is there a point where we will say, stop people coming in because it's just at capacity? And do you have an idea what that point might be?
Yes, I did discuss that with staff yesterday when I heard they were really stressed and dealing with a lot. I did tell them that they did have authority if they feel that they are at capacity to close the people from walking in, and I don't know that they did that. They don't want to do that, but I think they were very near making that decision.
Because I can see at a point that you're not going to have the facilities, like the restroom facilities?
Correct.
And other facilities to be able to, you know, take care of a certain number of people, so...
Yeah, so I think we're heading in that direction if this continues. But the good news is, it was a nice crowd, no problems. It was a pleasant family environment that we've always wanted to be there. It was just the numbers. It was just the numbers. It wasn't the group, so that's a good thing. That's a positive thing. That was always our goal when we developed the park, so...
Thank you very much.
Clearly, Jacob Myers Park is definitely a pearl along the river. And other, some other news is that we did receive word that a business at the LRA, at the Riverbank Industrial Complex, did receive an award. Donaldson, which is either one or two in terms of size at the Riverbank Industrial Complex, received an award from their national headquarters, and they will be receiving that tomorrow, and they've invited the mayor to attend and to be a part of that award presentation. So, very, very good to see that our businesses are getting some acknowledgement, and as the council knows, the Riverbank Industrial Complex also has received an award for base reuse excellence, which Councilmember Barbara Martinez and myself and the Executive Director will be going to Washington, DC next week to accept that award, so...
Is the Vice Mayor going to or not?
The Vice Mayor was not able to attend after all. Got...
Okay, next.
And that concludes staff comments this evening.
All right, item 7.2, council, starting with Councilmember Barbara Martinez.
I attended the Welcome Home Heroes Traveling Tribute Memorial Dedication. It was extremely hot that day. That was on Sunday, but it was an experience I think I will never forget, just seeing that there were so many people that have been affected by all of our wars, even going back to World War I and II. It was just a beautiful tribute to our veterans. And just a reminder about the senior vouchers that will be given out tomorrow at our farmer's market. The time again is tomorrow, May 28, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. First come, first served. Just get in line. You do not need any kind of ID or any kind of proof of your income. Just get in line and get your vouchers. And I also want to congratulate all of our graduates in our city, and I do believe that education is a lifelong learning process. And I also attended the Radical Reality Presentation at Cardosa Middle School, and the purpose of that presentation was to engage and connect and provide hope to our students to deter them from gangs and bullying, and also to assist our youth to make better choices. And I think that's all I have.
Was it successful, do you think?
Yes, it was. It was an event where there were several children that connected with the presenters, I mean, from tears to joy, just to have somebody to talk to, somebody that understands what they're going through, and to give them some hope. It was...
So, we did good in that strategic plan?
We did good with that presentation. They also had another presentation later on in the evening, which they said was more explosive, more powerful, and...
More family-oriented in that one, yeah.
Yes, yeah.
Good. Very good. Thank you very much. Councilmember Tucker?
Yes, I too wanted to congratulate all of our city's graduates at all different levels of their education, and just want them to remember, learning is a lifelong process, as you mentioned, and don't stop learning. You know, this is just the beginning. Keep going, you know, stay in school. And I just, I also had an opportunity to attend Memorial Day ceremonies down at the National Cemetery at San Onofre, and just want to make sure everyone remembers that Memorial Day is about remembering those who lost their lives in all of our wars, and it's a nice time to remember them, make sure that they're never forgotten. And I noticed that there were sections of the cemetery that had been adopted by various groups for presentation of flags or flowers and whatnot, but some sections hadn't been adopted, unfortunately. And so, I would just like to encourage people that it's a nice idea maybe to contact the National Cemetery and volunteer to adopt a section of the cemetery for remembrance of our fallen soldiers. That's all I have tonight.
Thank you very much. Vice Mayor?
I attended the employees' luncheon out at the Riverbank Industrial Complex, got to chat with a lot of the employees there. They seemed very satisfied with things. Likewise, the council met out there for a strategic planning session, and we got to take a tour of the facility and saw a lot of the cleanup that has been done in the last six months, and they've done an incredible amount of cleaning up, things that needed to be gotten rid of there. And last but not least, I would like to compliment our city manager on the wonderful color that she picked for our city hall.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Campbell.
Okay, yes, that was a closed-session evaluation period that we were out there for. Not, I just want to correct that, that wasn't a strategic planning. I agree. I want to ask the entire council to take a look at the general plan and review it as much as possible for certain specific events coming on up. One will be the North County Quarter Presentation given by the county, and others would be, is take a look at the general plan and think what you believe is possible to accomplish by 2025, 2050. You've heard me once before from up here state what I believe is possible and what I think we should do as a city together. And if you take a look at where Coffee Road is, to the, just to the east, if we stop our growth there for any of our planning, and then start concentrating on that property, not for development, but for bringing it either into our sphere of influence or annexation to prevent encroachment from other forces, other government agencies, and possible state legislation which would severely hamper our ability to plan without direct oversight. And I believe it's time for us, we're getting all of our planning documents in a row, this is just one more check in the box of getting our planning documents in a row. The general plan has us going all the way down to McHenry. I think that is a little excessive. I believe if we go to Coffee, to... I believe if we go to Coffee to 108, to Eleanor to 108, and not go beyond 108 on either in our, in our increase in our sphere of influence, we can protect ourselves. One of the things that I just want to caveat why I think is important, when we were just talking about access along Clarabelle Widening, we went to the city, to the county Board of Supervisors and made our comments to the Board of Supervisors, and their comments were, it's not in your sphere of influence, so it doesn't matter. Even if it's in our planning, it doesn't matter until we take possession of it. And if you take a look at the North County Corridor, it's mainly in Riverbank, in one of our planning, because it's not in our sphere. Why we didn't do it in 2008, could have been economics, could have been a lot of other things, but we should have done it in 2008. We haven't had a SOI or annexation since 1997, I believe that's when it was. So please consider that for that presentation coming on up, and take a look at what is being used for other projects without our comments, because it's not in our sphere. However, since 2008, we have been recovering from the 2007, 2008 recession. It's been extremely slow. I was in with a financial planner and advisor that was saying, the conditions are ripe to have another recession in the next two years. If you take a look at it, that's eight to 10 years from when it started, that would be beginning of the eight-year recovery end. So we should start looking at how we proceed and how we protect this city and the future that we want to have developed, not developed for us. There was a valid comment, can't comment on it or take action on it, but I'm just wondering openly, can the water, sewer, garbage bill be viewed online? And what would it take to do that? Just wondering.
So whether or not the customers can see their water bills online? At the current time, that is not available, as far as I'm aware. That is something that with the new metering, the new meter system, that that would be available.
Okay.
Assuming that that goes forward. We're still in the initial steps there, but if that goes forward, that would be one of those things, and our structure of finance may have some information that maybe is different.
You need a new website.
We do need a new website.
We do need a new website, but the city manager's correct. Currently, we do not have that capability where they can view their utility bills online, but I'm pleased to announce that as of July 1st, we will be working with a new printing company. The reduced cost that they have proposed within comparison to the contract we have now will allow us to afford to be able to provide that service to our residents. So within the upcoming months, you'll see a transition to a different format of a utility bill, as well as being able to access those online.
Very good. Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you. With that, we proceed to item 8, closed session, consistent with item 8.1, conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to subdivision Bravo of Government Code 54956.9, one potential case. Item 8.2, conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to subdivision Bravo of Government Code 54956.9, one potential case. Item 8.3, conference with real property negotiators pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.8, property 3313 Santa Fe Street. Agency negotiator Jill Anderson, city manager, property negotiator Gene Mondo and Betty Mondo Family LP, under negotiation price in terms of payments. Before we go into closed session, is there anyone from the public wishing to address any items going into closed session? Before we go to closed session, I also want to ask if there's any comments on item 10, 10.1, the Budget Advisory Committee meetings of April 23, 2014, not 2104. Seeing none, we go to closed session.
Council, would you like to stay in here?
Yes.